Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm happy to see that folks did come out tonight and we're happy that you're here. I'm going to ask the councils to join me in this very special presentation we're about to do. You know, this is a very special night for me because, first of all, as you probably know, I started teaching graduate school and it's very difficult to be amazing to do that in a meeting. And I was very happy that I was able to arrange my students to come another day on a Saturday so that I could be here tonight. Because tonight is a very special night. I have to say that before we, I would just like to say a couple of words because the Peruvian community here in Long Beach and the Peruvian community really in most parts of Long Island are a very surrounding community. And it took me to visit, I visited Peru this summer. I went to Machu Picchu and I also went to Fusco and Lima. And one of the most fascinating things that I found was that the Peruvian people are very industrious people in Peru. And we got to visit Iquitos in the Amazon River. And so we met some of the tribes that have been there for close to 3,000 years, this amazing history that the Peruvian people have. And as you probably know, we're only now realizing how important Machu Picchu has been for Latin America. We know now that it's become a tremendous administrative center for Latin America before the Spanish. This was during the time of Echeverri. It's amazing, amazing history it has. It is for me a tremendous honor that to keep the tradition that we've had in Long Beach for almost, what, I think 20 something years of having this beautiful procession that we have, it's become part of the culture of Long Beach. The Peruvian families, I remember I had them in school, I had the Lambda family, one of the first Peruvians to come to Long Beach. And these folks today are all professionals doing very well in business and we're very proud of them. And with that, I'd like to say that we, the city of Long Beach, have a tradition of honoring and recognizing this magnificent group. Whereas the Armada del Señor de los Milagros is a Christian fraternity with a chapter in the city of Long Beach at Saint Mary of the Isles Roman Catholic Church. And whereas the Armada del Señor de los Milagros is a century-old fraternity in Peru and boasting thousands of devotees worldwide. And whereas October 22nd, 2017, the Armada del Señor de los Milagros will celebrate its 27th annual procession in the image of el Señor de los Milagros through the vicinity of the parish here in Long Beach. Now therefore, the city council, the city manager, and the city of Long Beach issued this proclamation in recognition of the cultural, fraternal, and charitable contributions of Armada de los Milagros here in Long Beach. Welcome and thank you. Le agradecemos mucho a todos. Thank you. Hello, hello. Buenas, buenas. ¿Qué tal? Maybe we want to go into the comp there to check. Sure, right. Thank you. Muchas gracias. The procession outside. Machu Picchu. Again, we welcome the eternal order of the Armada de los Milagros here in Long Beach. And what a wonderful way to really round off of the magnificent month that we've had here in Long Beach, really throughout the country of Hispanic Heritage Month. One of the things that we've done here in Long Beach is, as you know, we have the picture, the movie, Selena, which is, of course, where Jennifer Lopez has skyrocketed fame afterwards. And we're very proud of all that. And we're also proud of the many communities of Spanish speaking people that make Long Beach our home. The other thing I wanted to mention is that, as you know, that like we suffered here with Sandy, Puerto Rico is suffering horrendous situations. And, you know, of course, as you know, I am very concerned about my father. He was so frail that he moved here that he may not make it here. So we asked that we all join and be able to give generously to help to bring Puerto Rico back. And as you know, Long Beach too was suffering from tremendous financial burden when we were hit by Sandy. And it was really the generosity of people that helped us to bring Long Beach back. So we ask that we think about that, that we think of our brothers in the Caribbean, all of the Caribbean nations there. With that, folks, I just want to remind the folks of a couple of things, I have to remember exactly what they are. The first thing is that at the end of the meeting, we will have good and welfare and you can sign up for that now before the end of the city council meeting. It's very important that we have folks stay for our meeting before they can be here for the good and welfare. The other thing is that we want to remind the folks that we have a three-minute limit on, you know, the comments and questions that you might have. And again, we ask everyone to have, you know, really the respect of one another while people are making comments. We may not agree with what folks may say, but they have a right to be able to say that here and we believe in that right. And that decorum that we ask for folks, you know, to really forward is what we ask for everybody here to do here at the city council meeting. And finally, we may not be able to answer all of your questions for whatever reason could be, legal reason, could be a reason that we don't have the information to give you, but we welcome your comments and we need to hear from you. And again, that's an important part of what we do. But with that, I'm going to turn our meeting over to Mr. Fraser.
Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to a regular meeting of council in the city of Long Beach on Tuesday, October 17, 2017. Mr. Ramon, Councilman Mendel.
Yeah.
Mr. More.
Yeah.
Vice President Ramon.
Yeah.
Professor Torres.
Here.
Lieutenant Director President City Manager Jack Sherman. Corporation Council Robert X. Cecil. How is it? Mr. Ramon, would you please, tonight, be a pledge of allegiance?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands on our nation, on God, in the visible, the glory, and justice for all.
Again, thank you for being here tonight, folks. We're always very excited that we have people that come and join in the process of city council. With that, I want to ask our city manager to give us an update of what's going on in the city.
Okay. We are pleased to announce that earlier this month, the Long Beach Police Department has received AAA Platinum Awards for Community Traffic Safety. The Platinum Award is the highest award given by AAA and it is representative of the wide variety of traffic safety measures the city has implemented in recent years. As the city continues to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month, we'll again thank everyone who came out to see a free showing of the film Selena at the Long Beach Cinema presented by the city of Long Beach in partnership with the Long Beach Latino Civic Association. As a reminder, the city is continuing its relief effort for Puerto Rico as it reflects donations at the Long Beach Ice Arena. Just as we have to pass this continued paid forward, we apply our's in front of the room with more details. Thank you to everyone who made this past weekend's Fall Festival a huge success. Thousands of folks came out on Saturday and Sunday for a great event, another wonderful example of what makes Long Beach life so special. Finally, as we approach the fifth anniversary of Superstorm Sandy, we'll be reflecting on what the entire Long Beach community's gone through, recognizing the groups and first responders with aid in our recovery. Just as we did last month with the Paranise Tips and the LV Ready hashtag, we are regularly posting photos and videos on social media throughout October, highlighting how far we've come using the hashtag LVNYStrong. We encourage you to do so as well. For that and tonight, the city's holding a major event commemorating the five-year anniversary of Superstorm Sandy and our recovery from the storm on Sunday, October 29. The ceremony will take place at the Kennedy Plaza at 2:00 p.m. At this event, I'd particularly thank the first responders for all of their assistance in helping us rebuild. You go proceed there.
First item this evening is a resolution to schedule the first regular council meeting in November for Wednesday, November 8, 2017.
Okay, by reason of fact, it was Tuesday of the month and remember it is Election Day. These council desires are scheduled to set the date for the next day.
Very good and certainly seems logical. Any comments from the council on this change of the meeting day? Any comments from the public on that change of the meeting day? Okay, we'll move on to our next one.
I do a resolution to authorize a transfer of funds for the 2017-2018 this year.
Do you decide the transfer of funds to be used for the replacement of a chlorine analyzer, the replacement of a wastewater inlet sampler, and move remaining recreation funds into a supply material line to be used throughout the year?
Okay, very good. Any comments from the council on this new equipment or, you know, the continuation of equipment that we've had? Any comments from the public on this new equipment? Okay, we're going to move on.
I do a resolution to schedule the first regular council meeting in November, November 8, 2017. Would you support the action?
I'll let you decide.
Second? Voting, Mr. Mendel.
Yes.
Mr. More.
Yes.
Vice President Ramon.
Yes.
Professor Torres.
Yes.
I do a resolution to authorize a transfer of funds for the 2017-2018 this year. Would you support the action?
I would.
Second? Voting, Mr. Mendel.
Yes.
Mr. More.
Yes.
Vice President Ramon.
Yes.
Would you call me?
I would.
Voting, Mr. Mendel.
Yes.
Mr. More.
Yes.
Vice President Ramon.
Yes.
Okay, that was a quick meeting and, you know, we now enter the good and welfare portion of our meeting tonight. And again, just a reminder that we have a three-minute limit on comments and we do need and want to very much so hear from you. Our first person that we had in good and welfare that signed up for speaking is Linda Keen. Ms. Keen, are you here?
Yes.
Welcome, Ms. Keen.
Thank you very much. I haven't been to city council for some time and I'm happy to be here, although I'm not so happy without the reasons I'm here.
Okay, we just need you to state your name and the mic for the record.
Linda Keen, 313 West Walnut Street.
You're welcome.
Last night, I attended a candidates forum. It was extremely informative. They had an excellent crowd there. I was somewhat surprised, maybe even chagrined, to see that Mr. Mendel and his government were not there. They were the only two people who weren't there. This was, I hope you have a great explanation because it was extremely disrespectful to five organizations from this community that represent a lot of people in this community. So I see the rest of my time, Mr. Mendel and Mr. Diamond, why weren't they there? Mr. Mendel asked me to use, not Mr. Torres, asking me to use.
I wish to be sure that you finished up on the page. Okay. And I see there are other people here tonight, so what I say now would be my response to those people as well. While initially very excited to participate in the forum, upon learning that the rules were constantly in plus and there seemed to be some, put it this way, I don't think it was a proper forum for the free exchange of ideas. I look forward on October 30, the League Women Voters is having a nonpartisan, nonpolitical forum where the candidates can then participate. I'll be participating in that forum. I thank the Civic Association for putting together the forum last night. Unfortunately, my personal opinion was upon reflection due to, I'm not going to go into specifics, it's a national governmental meeting, it's not a political meeting. So my beliefs, I don't think it was a proper forum based upon the way it was structured.
Thank you. I'm just going to, and the only comment I'll give is that I'm looking forward to the League Women Voters debate that's scheduled for later in the month. I too, upon further reflection, realized that yesterday's debate was not appropriate for me to participate in. I regret that I was put together and I told it with a very nice exchange of ideas, but I'll look forward to the nonpartisan debate that's scheduled by the League Women Voters who historically have had a structure of rules but no change and have an impartial moderator who can handle the debate in that way and I look forward to it. Thank you, though.
Okay. I'm just really sorry that you weren't there because it didn't come across as you didn't like the format of it. It came across that you were passing on an opportunity to counter accomplishments, to explain certain things that may have gone wrong, decisions that you made. You passed on this and it could be interpreted as you are embarrassed by your accomplishments and there is no explanation for certain decisions you have made. Thank you.
Our next person that we have, and again, we welcome everyone's comments, Mr. Mike Graham. Mike Graham, over here. Mike, it's good to see you. Welcome.
First of all, I'd like to thank the Almighty God for me being here. You know, the last five years, I've tried to make meetings with you guys. You've chosen the things that I didn't do. But most of all, from the stress of trying to make meetings, I have a pacemaker in my heart. You know, I lost my smile, my family, everything, the respect of the community. If I would have any allegations, if you guys said I did, I would have been rocked. But all I asked for was a fair chance. If God gave me a second chance in life, why can't you guys give me a second chance to take care of my family? I hope and pray that you guys can forgive me. I almost died, but nothing wrong and I didn't do any of that. I'm not going to come begging for a job anymore. I just hope and pray you guys can forgive me because of the stress. Now I have a pacemaker. From being an athlete who almost died two or three weeks ago, I'd rather you guys put me in prison than make me be embarrassed in the community that I grew up in, on my bed, out of house degree. I'm not an idiot, I'm not a bad person. And I'm sorry if I paid anybody for the license. I was going to harm you and everything. But how would you act if you all stepped off and you didn't do a meeting for them? Thank you, God, and God bless you.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Thank you for coming here tonight. Okay. We had, our next person is Mr. Vinnie Leese. Am I pronouncing that correctly? I'm sorry, I trouble reading some of the letters there.
Don't worry.
Well, welcome. We want to hear from you.
Thank you very much, everybody. I'll start off with a must-ask you a question, you know. I'm pretty kind, it is must-asking for kids' season. I have a question, if you guys help me out back, you know, with what was about getting the road patched, and I want to thank you very much for having that done. But getting to number two steps in trying to get the money back, I made a pull on September 4th, I believe, to the building department, the public works department. They told me once again that I have to take my name down, check me out, all that fun stuff, and they pulled me back, you know? Never pulled me back, so they pulled back in the beginning of October. I'm still waiting. So I did a little research that I know there's about 1,250 homes that are in the process of being lifted or have lifted now with this deposit of $500 to $150. You're looking at about $625,000 that's floating around somewhere. I would personally like to know the percentage that homeowners have received back on their deposit because I never received a letter or my general contractor received a letter that it was also over $3,000 to do your final patch, they take the money back to your deposit, you forfeited your forfeited deposits. So I've never actually got any written letter from the city of Long Beach from any departments dating that back. So once again, I'm just waiting for either, I think it's $250 in my case as a deposit, but, you know, that goes for diapers, that goes for foods, you know, little things that make my life a little easier. So, you know, I came up here last time and somehow my road got patched, so maybe this time I'll get a check of $250. So, you know, I'll try, I'll probably just tell you that's my charity, so, you know, you can make that happen a little quicker. Thank you.
Thank you, Vinnie. You know, raising your home, I have to say that personally, probably one of the most stressful nine months that I spent. And, of course, that was one of the things that I did not receive my feedback and what I probably did get back was something with the sewer line works that we had already done prior to the hurricanes Sandy. So it's tough, it's a tough period for all of us and it's tough to go through this process. It's a lot of paperwork and it's, yes.
President Torres, can someone just confirm with respect to the letters and are the letters being issued? Do we have anyone here that can speak to that?
Quick, just because I'm a teacher for 17 years, you know, professional and stuff like that, just a phone call, actually, I called these five, four, my contact had called me within 24 hours, my hearing would be in slant.
You're absolutely right.
Just throwing it out there.
Yes, I agree with you totally.
So can, back to my question, can someone speak to the issue in terms of issuing of letters or phone calls?
Okay. Yeah, it's public works. I'm sure the public works commissioner is not aggressive in particular home in question, but I'm sure he can speak to the overall process. Welcome Commissioner, it's good to see you. I see you there and glad you're here.
Thank you. We do get back as soon as we inspect the road, the road has been closed up and everything's done, we do get back to the people and return every funds. This particular gentleman, this is the second time he's been here. The last time, as soon as I found out about it, the road got patched. This time, I have not, nobody's told me that he's called again. If somebody finds it, and I get an answer back from one of my staff, all they have to do is ask for me and I get right on the phone with them. I don't, you know, hide behind the staffs. All they have to do is say, you know what, I haven't heard from a staff member in a week or two days, just call the staff and say I'd like to speak to the commissioner and I will handle it. But if I don't know about it, they don't tell me everything that goes on in the office, we get hundreds of calls a week, you know? So I realize it's not your responsibility, but do you know if a letter is issued explaining the process of what actually happens when you give a deposit to a road closure or if there's some explanation given or? It is explained that there was a letter that goes with it, so I don't know why the gentleman didn't get a letter. The issue, this is the process that's going on for, you know, for revenues and stuff. Maybe the contract gets it.
Well, maybe it's possible if you could send him the appropriate letter as well as the, if the fund is waiting for our numbers and the contract is finished.
Absolutely. And just maybe look into the process of making sure that that's.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner. Glad you're here. We're going to move on to our next person, Ms. Blanchett, Ms. Allison Blanchett. Good to see you. Welcome.
Welcome, professionally, the police commissioner in the city for that AAA traffic safety award. You're welcome. You should know what I'm talking about. So, a couple of things, Fall Festival, I sent the whole city council a message about this and thank you for giving back to me some of this. On Saturday, I was there, I was just holding a couple of flyers in my hands, I had my bike parked, you know, all bikes, random bikes everywhere, so I took up specific bike parking for Fall Festivals. And I had specialists come up to me telling me that I would have to leave or I'd have to put away, like, my flyers or I'm going to be advertising, and I was just standing there. So they kind of walked away after I said I'd be standing here and they came back and I said, "Were you told by Michael Robinson to tell me these things?" And they just kind of put their head down a little bit and showed us that we don't want to get in trouble, can you please? And I'm like, "Did he tell you these things?" And I look over and I see him standing with Rup Blanchett and Fran Adelson and they said yes. It's not right to be bullied like that. The problem here is the next day, I went on Twitter and I love Lauren Curran, love her, love her, known her for a very long time, but I see her at the Fall Festival, photos handing out flyers, standing next to Jack Schneierman, Hume Diamond, and Scott Mendel. Guys, come on, the devil's standard, what's fair is fair. You know that's not right. And Hume, I tried to message you directly on Facebook to take it off of email and your city councilwoman account, you blocked me. I sent you a message about that a week ago and you didn't respond. Why are you hiding from residents? And Anthony, I'd like to speak to you later about your comments about the union printed materials. You know, you guys are already harassing me and then like both professions are harassing, but bullying and treating me unfairly. I'm a third-party candidate. You guys have tens of thousands, over $100,000 each of your coffers. I have $500 awarding the campaign on, all by myself, with a staff of zero. And so through you to bully me, come on, now you know that's not right. So as far as the union stuff goes, I self-printed and those big signs, like, as individual shop owner, I'm supporting a local mom and pop shop that also prints for the city of Long Beach, you know, through his business. So like including me in that, you know very well, I've had 10 years of advocacy work. I stood with Occupy Wall Street. I like rallied in the square for legal rights. I actually earned that union endorsement more than you did. So like it's really offensive that you guys are pushing that, like, be fair.
Thank you, Ms. Blanchett. This is our last person and we have, and I'm happy you're here too, Mr. Lu DuBala.
Good, how are you? Vulcan, if I issue for a change. I have a couple of questions. The, one of the council meetings, Jack Root said that he was looking at other areas of funding for Vulcan. That's one question, is there anything other than the program to have the city do the Vulcan and pay it back in 20 years? My other question is, because the city is not doing it, I reopened my overriding case, actually it's never posed. The problem is the deadline for Vulcan is December 31st, that everything's done. Is there anything that the city can do to advocate to get that extended? I have a contract lined up, we've got some deposits. The problem is getting the permitting to take one to two months, three months at that point past the deadline. So is there anything that can be done to get that extended, either working to the state or the governor's office?
Of course, well, the first answer is, of course, we'll advocate and continue to advocate for additional funding as we are, I think you know we are, and we're happy to advocate for an extension as well.
Is there anything that's been done so far to advocate for that? Or?
We have not advocated for an extension so far.
Yeah.
I don't think so.
Okay.
You're the shortest right now.
Yes.
Right, I know, I just talked to John.
Yours is certainly an extenuating circumstance. We're happy to work with you and be aggressive.
Okay, yeah, because I know, yeah, because me last month, when the city did not do it and that kind of put us in a bind and now it's run and begun. So anything you could do to push that, you know? And I know you've talked to John before that there are 17 people who apply for Vulcan, your rising, so there's 17 families trying to deal with it right now. So, you know, it's only a small number of people, but it's important to the neighborhood, you know? If these 17 houses are not, you know, Vulcan them down and there's a storm again, you know, that figure tends, that's the issue. Thank you.
City manager, can you, whatever letter gets sent out or you hold, can you please make sure that the council is aggressive towards on all the extensions?
Okay. That brings to a close our meeting and again, I want to thank everyone for coming on tonight and please get safely, all of you. Take care.